All right, good morning, everyone. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles is absent today. Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilman Worthy is on his way. I think he will arrive shortly. Councilman Echols is absent today. Councilman Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We do have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for today. We thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed on this great city. God, we are so undeserving of your grace, your kindness, but we are so thankful. I pray that you will provide the wisdom today for this council as they make the important decisions that will affect this entire city. God, I pray that you'll be with Dr. Toles and Bob as they're under the weather today and feeling bad, that you will just help them to fill our love and your care for them as we pray for them this morning. God, I pray that you'll be with our meeting today, be with the, continue to be with the mayor and his staff, give him the guidance he needs. And we promise to give you the praise and the glory for all the good things you're gonna do, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Mayor? Left you over by yourself.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on June 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of June 15th through the 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
We, uh, the Gadsden Times had a, I guess you'd call it a contest, but anyway, they give out the names of all the best events, Reader's Choice, and they vote on it online. And so, there are some around town who think we have nothing to do, but after I get through the stack of things that the city won and our employees did it, I want to recognize them. I think you'll see how amazing it is. First of all, Ben Ponder's been voted as a favorite in the category of best firefighters, Ben here. The next one is, uh, the best place to host a work event, and that is 210 at the Tracks. And anybody from Parks and Rec who handles all that, yes, Scott? The next one is, uh, the one that has been voted as a favorite in the category of best event venue. And right now, that's 210 at the Tracks. This time next year, it'll be across the river, and it's gonna be some amazing things over there. The next one is the best local tourist attraction, and that's Couso Landing over across the river there where the fishing and the trail, all that. The next one is the best place to host a work event, Gadsden Museum of Art. Is anybody here from the art museum? He's out of town, Ray Wetzel, but anyway, that's another one.
Ray got married, I think.
He did.
Yeah.
He may not come back. He got married.
I know, because he got married on Friday and I went to the wedding on Saturday.
Must've been a big.
Day late.
That must've been a big wedding.
I was hanging right in there.
Uh, the next one has been voted as a favorite in the category of best event venue, and this is the Pittman Theater. Anybody, yeah, Parks and Rec. Scott, you getting all the?
My goodness, Scott.
The next one is voted as the winner in the category of best campground, Nakalila Falls. If you haven't been up there lately, we have to about 13 or 14 walking jogging trails. Uh, I mean, it's really an amazing place. Christmas at the Falls is probably the cheapest thing you'll ever see with that many lights. The next one is the best local tourist attraction, and that also is Nakalila Falls.
All these folks are the ones who make things happen, trust me. If we need something done, I just say, well, y'all know how to do it.
The next one has been voted as the winner in the category of best local event, Christmas at the Falls.
They used to have the Nakalila Improvement Club, and we used to have, I was in it, where we had businesses that decorated the trees and everything, and now there's probably, what, a couple million lights up there, and it's cheap. You go, you go to some of these places, they charge you fifty, seventy-five dollars for right on, get on the train, right about 200 feet, see Santa Claus, two lights in some of these.
All of you in the back who are in Parks and Rec, stand up. Jeanne, she's our Parks and Rec Director. When you have good help, things work really good, and we have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all of those responsible city departments for your hard work. And it's, uh, it's great to see you recognize, we, we often say it from here, how much we appreciate the work you've done, but it's also good to see peer groups and other outside groups recognize you, so, so we appreciate it again, and keep up the good work. All right, unfinished business? We have none today. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to adopt a revised chart of permitted uses. The Planning Department has requested the amendment to make the chart of permitted uses more compatible with current requests for business licenses. The Planning Commission reviewed this and unanimously recommended that the council approve it. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, let me make sure that everybody that already has a business in this district would be grandfathered in, correct?
That's correct, that's the way I understand it.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody would be, that's already there, would be grandfathered in.
Okay.
Is that right, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
You woke him up just for him to say that?
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in, in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
We would need to have unanimous consent if we consider it today.
Oh, it's a public hearing, that's right.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules to hear today.
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move that we adopt it.
Second.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? And again, if you, if you're wondering why we had to engage in this, in this activity, it's mainly because if you could see the old, um, if you could see the old set or the old chart, it was very much dated. There were some very outdated categories within that, and so this kind of brings the chart into the 21st century, if you will. So, uh, gives us an opportunity to make it more relevant in our contemporary society. Okay. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 212 Oakley Drive in District 2, David Green and Community Credit Union being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in June of 2017. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the Pledge of the Council?
On recommendation of the Building Department, I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 923 Holly Street in District 5, ECO Property and Investments LLC, the Exchange Bank of Alabama, and the State of Alabama being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in January of 2017. There've been some minor improvements to the exterior of the property, but it has stopped. There's been no work done in the last four or five months. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
Okay, what is the Pledge of the Council?
On recommendation of the Building Department, I move that we abate the nuisance, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien for demolition on property at, located at 1408 Chandler Street in District 1, FNA NP LLC, those certain rights of redemption of Melissa Hardy, Johnny E. Webster, and Eric Cook being the last known owners. The amount is $3,616.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien for demolition on property located at 3317 Irwin Avenue in District 1, Charles Hubbard, Charles Hubbard Care of Cadence Bank, Community Credit Union Corporation, and Superior Financial Services LLC being the last known owners. The amount is $3,916.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens for property located at 322 Keeling Road in District 1, Cynthia W. Elston and the heirs of Troy L. Elston being the last known owners. The amount is $3,116.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 15 is a resolution reappointing a member to the Gadsden City Board of Education. This reappoints Wayne Watts in District 5 for a five-year term expiring in June of 2023. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Motion is there, second?
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 16 is a resolution authorizing a third amendment to the tax abatement agreement with Prince Metal Stamping USA. The original tax abatement agreement was granted in 2011. However, for a variety of reasons, the development and equipping of the facility has been delayed. This extends the completion date to June 30th, 2019, and the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 17 is presented today for first reading. It's an ordinance adopting fiscal year 2018 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and Budget totaling $1,052,595. And I hope everyone notices that that's, uh, that's up some from, uh, from last year. The program year will run from June 1st, 2018 to May 31st, 2019. The Community Development Planner has advised that the council, that council action is needed today on this ordinance so that paperwork can be submitted to HUD in a timely manner. The Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Vote to adopt.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
On the discussion part, the only thing I would like to see is we spend more money on fixing up housing, uh, because I think we only spending, what, 180, 180,000 on it, but I wish we could because there's a need there.
To do that, we have to have the people that will come up here and fill the applications out, and that can qualify for that program, and there's, you know, some qualifications to that. I'm thinking one of them, you have to be 62 years old, and there cannot be any grandchildren living with you under the age of 12 on some of them, I think.
A lot of them qualifying, it was just because the average age of a house in Gadsden is seven, eight years old, it's gonna take more than 5,000 to fix it up, that's all I'm saying.
Would, uh, would 5,000 be a start on some of them, though you're talking about?
If it's more than 5,000, they won't fix it, because the whole reason behind that program is to keep them in that house. So if you gotta spend more than 5,000 to fix it, they have declined the application.
Yeah, the stopgap is, uh, is typically, in other communities, the stopgap is the community action program. They're able to go beyond typically that 5,000. Um, and so, you know, maybe something to consider down the road might be a partnership at some level with, uh, an additional nonprofit to support that activity, so.
The roofing con, the roofing's not the same, but roofing's saving 500 nick, to put a roof on somebody's house.
It's a different program.
Is it 5,000? Can we actually put a roof on a house now for 5,000 dollars?
We can, a couple of metal roofs, and it depends on the size of the house, but the lead-based paint is what predicts us from beyond that 5,000. So we have to assume it's a lead-based paint.
Nine times out of 10, it will be. If a house was built before 1970, it would have the lead-based paint.
So again, that's, that's one of the ironies in, with this being HUD funding, is that the, the housing element is generally the most difficult one to manage because of the restrictions and, and the private ownership element. So, it is something that we could, we could look at, but there's, again, it's a, it's a very difficult one to manage. But the, but on a brighter note, as it relates to this, again, I don't want to miss the point to speak to the fact that since, uh, since I worked in community development many, 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 many moons ago, um, we had at that time, Nick wasn't a 2.1 million dollar block grant that we, that we managed. Most of the time that I've been in office, it's hovered around, right around $900,000 annually. Uh, and so to see us be north of a million again, once again, um, you know, I, you know, with it being an election year, I'd like to with a straight face take, take credit for it, but, um, you know, I don't, I don't think we, any of us can, can realistically take credit for it, but we have actively lobbied for years with our federal delegation to, to continue to protect our HUD monies, because again, these are seed monies for a lot of our projects here locally. We use HUD monies to, to jumpstart a lot of our projects and programs. The, the key element there is that you have to, the key requirement is you have to spend that money typically in a low to moderate income area. So, so again, that gives us an opportunity to focus on the poorest among us and, and help to build up those communities. So, so again, we, we need to continue to do some of that.
From time to time, we do have volunteer groups who come in. We've even had some churches from like, up towards Tennessee, I think, Marshall County, uh, some of the pastors here in this city, and Glencoe and Hokespluff, some of them have volunteered, and we furnish all the supplies if we get the volunteers, and they open a whole house two or three days. They have cooking hamburgers. Uh, it's, it's really special when they come and do that, because they're just using their own time, they don't get paid for it, and we appreciate it.
Okay. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, new business? Is there any new business? Department reports, committees, boards?
Mr. President, I'd like to make an announcement. We're getting into the election season for the city of Gadsden, so we will begin qualifying candidates, um, at next Tuesday, July the 3rd, at 8:00 a.m. in the City Clerk's office. And for those of you who don't know, our office is located on the fourth floor of this building. The room number is 401, and the qualifying fee is 50 dollars. We'll begin qualifying and then take a holiday the very next day, July the 4th, it's Independence Day holiday, and so we will pick backup with our qualifying on July the 5th. The regular office hours for the Clerk's office are 8:00 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. The last day of qualifying will be July the 17th, and on that day, to comply with state law, my office will be open until 5:00 p.m. That's the time that the state law provides that we close out our qualification period. The election day is the fourth Tuesday in August, August 28th, and if necessary, runoff election will be six weeks later on Tuesday, October the 9th, and then all of the elected officials will take office for the new administration to begin on Monday, November the 5th.
All right, thank you, Ivan.
We're getting a lot of calls about people putting signs on the right of way. There's a city ordinance that you can't do that, so if you're between the, I think, the sidewalk and, is this rightly, I mean, not Lee, Heath, sorry, in that right on the right of way is between the sidewalk and the curb, pretty much.
Rightways vary throughout each street, throughout the city, but in general nature, if you, if you're not sure where the right of way is, if you'll basically keep it from the sidewalk, the area from the edge of pavement to the back of the sidewalk is generally accepted. If you're not sure, that's a safe bet. That's right in most cases.
Yeah, we, so we're getting a lot of complaints, and pretty soon, Public Works will be going around and they'll be taking them up. And, uh, if your sign gets taken up, you can go out to Public Works, they'll have it stacked out there.
For, for the record, I suggested about four years ago that we pick one spot in the city and let everybody put their sign there, but that didn't gain much momentum. It sure would save us a lot of money on signs, that's for sure.
I guess I'm up. I have a confession to make this morning. I've been trying to reach my wife on the telephone. I went down, I talked to all the teachers, I talked to everybody in here, she was Buster and Curly's hands, she's sitting right back there, you know? Frankie, where'd he go? I need a ride home. Where'd he go? You ran off, left me.
She walked in with some other guy.
I think she gonna leave a one, too. Anyway, thank you for coming, Barbara, I appreciate it.
Barbara, it's good to see you, for sure, good to see you. All right, so citizens' request, um, we have, actually have two individuals who are coming to speak about the, uh, the elected school board issue. Judge Millican? Is it, is it okay to still call you Judge?
It is.
All right.
I could be called back any minute. First of all, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come here and have a few words with you and speak with you today about the issue, uh, but I wanted to start out by prefacing that on the fact that I'm not here to advocate for or against an elected school board. That's not what I'm here for, and that's not what the process is all about. What I'm here for is to do about three things. One of those is to advocate the people's right to vote on that issue. And secondly is to maximize the voter turnout on that issue. And thirdly, and very importantly, is the cost involved in that, in the maintaining that at the lowest cost that's possible. And I wanted to bring a few things to your attention that you may or may not be aware of, I don't know if you've read the Act or not, but, uh, the way I understand this, Act number 2018-565 was passed in March, signed by the Governor on April the 6th, and it authorizes, or basically it says that the City Council of Gadsden shall have a referendum on the issue of whether or not we will have an elected school board or not. And basically, it laid out the terminology for that, and it says, you either, yes or no, you're in favor of it or you're not, very simple. And it doesn't send it back to the city of Gadsden for y'all to debate it, for y'all to vote on it, for you to do anything of that nature, it says "shall." And under the law, "shall" means you're gonna do it. Now, trust me, in my business, nobody likes, and I've learned this over the years, nobody likes to be told what to do. I don't, I'm sure you don't. You know, I know basically from what I've heard and what I've read in the paper how And I would have done what the consensus was. Because that's how you progress in our society is by having a consensus from the people. So what I wanted to do was bring a few things to your attention about the act and try to encourage you to go ahead and do it. And the first thing I did was, I looked at what the language in the act says. And it breaks it down in two parts. It says, first of all, that you're to have the referendum. If the referendum don't pass, that's it. We're done. If the referendum does pass, then you move on into the stage of actually having the election. Now, the referendum itself calls for a yes or a no vote. And the timeliness of it, it doesn't specifically state in the beginning of it, of the article in part one, about when you're gonna do it, about the referendum. But in the second part, when it talks about the election itself, it talks about and uses the terminology of practicable. And the dictionary defines practicable as capable of being affected, done, or executed. Something that's feasible. Practically, the first time that this could have been put on a ballot was when we had the primaries. Because the primaries are there, we could have put it on the ballot, seen whether it's gonna pass or not, and know which way to go from that point on. But that wasn't done. Next logical step would be to put it on the August ballot when the city council and the city mayor is going to be elected. And why would you say you need to do that? Give you a couple of good reasons. The last time we had a referendum in two thousand and eight, it cost the city of Gadsden thirty-four thousand dollars to have that referendum. And it didn't pass, so it stopped right then. The mayoral election that's going to take place in August along with the council is gonna cost approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars to have that election. And y'all check my figures. I called around and got the election officials and tried to get some kind of an estimate on what it was gonna cost, and that's the figures they gave me. If we have this referendum in the August election, all it's gonna cost us is the ink that it takes to print it on the ballots that's already going to be printed. They ain't been printed yet. We hadn't had the qualifications yet. Hasn't been done. Won't cost us anything. If it doesn't pass, we're through. It doesn't cost us anything. If it does pass, then you could actually have enough time to put it on the November general election ballot. Again, it wouldn't cost us anything but the amount of ink that it takes to print it out. If we pass this thing as a referendum on its own, it's gonna cost us estimated between thirty-five and forty-one thousand dollars to do that. If we then, it passes and we have to have an election, it's gonna cost us another thirty-one to forty, I mean thirty-five to forty-one thousand dollars to do it. Pray tell, if there's a runoff, it'll even be more money. So theoretically, we could be looking at spending in excess of a hundred thousand dollars for an issue that's been mandated to be done. Or we could use logic and good sense and put it on a ballot and have it done at no cost to us because the process is already there. And all through this act, after the initial election or after the initial referendum, it talks about coinciding this with the election of the mayor and the city council. It says that the, after the one, whatever we get it on the ballot was, the next one will be twenty-twenty-two. You just got through appointing somebody to the city board of education to twenty-twenty-three. Oh, I'm sorry. My five minutes is up. I'll end it by saying this. The right to vote of the people is the bedrock and the foundation of the society that we live on. And anytime we do anything to thwart that because of political interest, it's not right. That's wrong. And last but not least, it's the people's right to have their say. And voter turnout will be, statistics tells you that there's gonna be more people that vote in the city election with the mayor and the council than there's going to be if you put it in a referendum out by itself. So the voter turnout, the people's right to have their say, and something that's gonna come whether we like it or not. And I even got into the part about being mandamus and made to do it if we don't do it. I have no intentions of going there, but it could be done. If you don't put it on the ballot and you don't act in a timely manner, somebody's gonna do something and force the issue. And like I said to begin with, nobody likes to be told and forced to do anything. You build coalitions and you move forward and you progress. So again, I'm not saying vote for it. I'm not saying vote against it. I'm just saying, let's vote on it. Thank you, Jenny.
Judge Milligan, before you take your seat, I would, and I'm gonna ask this of the, of the person coming behind you as well.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd be interested in knowing, and if you're willing to share, obviously, what your position was on this issue in two thousand and eight and how you voted then.
In two thousand and eight, I voted for it. Again, I didn't come up here with the intentions of, of, of getting into that issue. And the reason why I voted for it is because I believe that we can never go wrong by having the people make and have their say. It's a vote. That's what this is. Too many people before us have fought and struggled for too many years to include as many people as we can in the process to have a vote. So from the issues that's most important in the world down to the, you know, the resolutions that you've done here today, and you guys, the vote of the people is what counts. The more that participates, the more we get the will of the people done. And that's why I say, cost-wise, people-wise, getting as many out as we can, August is the time to do it.
Do, duly noted.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I will, I will tell you, you... Not, not only are you part lawyer, you're part Baptist preacher too. I will definitely, I'll definitely give you that one. All right, so for the record, I will say that you and I voted absolutely the same position because I was very much for it back then, probably for different reasons, maybe not. But I was very much for it back then, and I voted for it back then. So, uh, so again, I don't think, uh, at least from where I stand, I don't think we, uh, are, are on the opposite sides of the table relative to people voting. I think I'm, I'm a huge proponent, I'm a benefactor of people voting, so I have to be for people voting. Mr. Avery?
Good morning.
Good morning.
You want to bring me behind a judge and a Baptist preacher? Boy, that's a hard act to follow. First of all, let me say this, um, when we were talking about, a few minutes ago, about community development block grant funds, Councilman Word is right. We used to spend about twenty-five thousand dollars per house. But you also, right, because we, we got two million dollars or better sometimes to do that. And so somewhere or another, we've got to get back to what, uh, is most important in saving houses and saving people and all that good stuff. But what I'm here to speak about this morning, and I'm glad the, the judge was here, I just wished he had have been here eight years ago to give that speech. You know, I fought real hard eight years ago to get the local delegation to put that, uh, referendum out there so we could vote on it. And, and I find it very interesting that eight years ago, when we voted for it, there was only one council district in this entire city that voted in favor of it. And that was District Three. The reason District Three voted for it in favor, because I got out and I knocked on doors and I talked to people. And I told them the importance of having people being able to select who represent you. And for some weird reason, every other district in this city decided that that's not what they wanted. I, I hope that the reason that we're pushing for it today is for the right reason and not for some special hidden agenda. I'm here to support you, Judge. I think we need to do it. But I also been on the other side up here, and I realized that if you don't budget stuff, you just can't do stuff when you want to. It, 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 you're talking about money. And I understand that that might be an issue here, that they don't have the money. And I think this city is responsible. I know these council members are responsible. And I think as soon as they get the budget together, I think they're gonna put all that in the budget. It, it just, I, I get kinda whatever when I hear people wanna rush and hurry and do something. And then I start thinking about what is the reason for it? If it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. And I'm gonna be out pushing for it. I'm gonna be out hoping that people will vote to do that. That's the right thing to do. But I want it done for the right reason. And, and right now, I just have a feeling that it ain't the right reason that people want an elected school board. I hope this city learned from eight years ago when they didn't get out here and the judge and other folk who are pushing for this elected school board. I hope they get out in the streets and knock on the doors and get it done. People need to have the right to vote for people who represent them. And if you don't think it's a good thing to get out there and do it, all you gotta do is look to Washington. And if you don't get out and vote, you might have that same situation on our school board if you don't get out and vote for the right folks. Guys, I got through before my five minutes was up. You couldn't believe that, could you?
Robert, that's unbelievable.
I know it's unbelievable.
We're gonna have to put a historical marker on that for this.
But, but, but seriously though, um, I hope the citizens of Gadsden go to the polls whenever this council can set that up and vote the way they're conscious, want them to vote. And I hope they do it for the right reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
I have a question. Can I ask Mr. Iverson questions? I hate to put you on the spot, but how much would it cost to do the election?
I would, I would ask Ms. Iverson not to answer that until the total cost has been assessed.
Well, okay, let me ask you this. How much would it cost you to put it on the August the twenty-eighth ballot?
Should I answer? I'm not aware of an additional cost, possibly some advertising. You would have to advertise the fact that you were going to conduct that. Not sure about the deadlines for that either. I'd probably need the help of Mr. Attorney there to research.
Okay, was the judge's, uh, figures, if we do it separately, were they close?
He was in the ballpark, for sure.
Was in the ballpark?
Yeah, he was in the ballpark.
Would you say so, Ms. Iverson? Thank you.
Yes, sir, I would.
Yeah, he was in the ballpark. So, well, I'll, I'll wait until the end before I make my comments. Mayor? Okay, Councilman Word?
Oh, yes. I just want to apologize for being a little tardy. I was out at the mega site with the governor. They were speaking about the naming it a advantage mega site. It's on a mega, industrial mega site. It's two in the state of Alabama, one in Baldwin County and one here. And, uh, she said she'll be going overseas pretty soon to advertise that, uh, mega site to try to get some industry in here. So I, I would hope the city of Gadsden will come on board. And like Senator Williams said, you know, a lot of people talk negative about it. But I want to congratulate the Edward County Commission for having a vision and standing by their vision when people said it couldn't work. And it's, and it's now a mega advantage site. So, thank you.
Councilman Billings?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Reed?
Whoa, I get all their time, right? I want to thank Buster and Curly, the musical Monday. I think they started out with about ten people. Was that Giddy Curly? I went yesterday and the line was four deep, all the way from where they were cooking and playing, all the way out to the street. Unbelievable. And the pound cake that I always got part of evaporated in the first ten minutes. Just left us, totally out. But anyway, I appreciate y'all. I really, really do because it's fabulous what y'all have done down there. And it's every Monday at eleven-thirty, if you want to go down and just see what they're doing. And eat a good meal. It was really good. So I appreciate it. July the fourth, uh, fireworks, the Gadsden Edward Patriots Association will be doing the fireworks as usual at nine o'clock that night. It's been on the web and as advertised, it's, the mall is gonna be having a function. So people assumed that we were gonna do the fireworks down there. No, we're not. We'll be down there. They'll be having their celebration at the mall. I'm announcing it for them, but I guess it's okay since it was out there. Uh, one other thing, I, I've gotta say it, I'm very, very much for people voting. Voting on a school board, voting whatever. Judge, I believe in that. But I'm gonna tell you, when it comes to education, in my view, we have got to get this thing right. Because education is the center of everything we've got in this town. It affects everything. And I've watched it in one respect on industry. A man brings his, his wife, his children to town to get an industry started in Gadsden, Alabama. First place she goes is down here to see what the educational system's doing. She wants her children to have a good education and move on. Then she goes down here to the museum, then she goes to cultural arts. She looks and dance. Families still care about their children. That is the foundation of everything. The man comes in, talks business with us at IDA. Then he goes and plays golf, and he goes back and she says, hey, that place is torn all pieces. I'm not about to come here. You forget it. And don't ever believe the strength and will of a woman. When she tells that man, he's not coming, because she ain't moving here. And we've had that problem in the last few months, haven't we? About getting quality people here, and they look and they're not coming. Hey, and we're willing to pay them. Now, that's sad to me. And if we don't get this thing straightened out, we in bad shape. We're gonna get worse. Population-wise, I came here, it was bound forty, fifty thousand. Now we're down to thirty-four, five. It's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. But it's okay. Y'all can rebut anything I say, because I'm just saying the way I feel it. I thought he was getting on to me there at first. But I'm gonna tell you, you gotta put Gadsden first after God, country, flag, and the whole smear down to family. But family is the foundation of this whole place. And we're gonna lose it, y'all, if we don't start straightening it up and get this thing right. Well, I, I learned the hard way from Lee Roberts, it better be legal, Daddy. Are you going to jail? So I missed that twice, so I'm in pretty fair shape there. Anyway, that's all I got. I appreciate y'all listening to my little rant, but it's what I feel.
And I, and I apologize. And I, I do apologize to anybody that feels the urge to speak out in a public meeting. But honestly, we really have, and I think the judge really understands this, you have to be protective of decorum, um, otherwise there'd be no order. So, um, so again, I, I apologize for, for, I, I apologize for it, but I understand it. And I understand why. We have to, we have to be that way. So, I mean, there, there's so much. I mean, there, you know, I, I think, again, I'll go back to what I said earlier. Uh, I'm very much in support of people being allowed to vote their interests. Now, we'll, I will tell you this, um, you know, my date right now, the date that I've kinda stood behind is, is November. I, I think the turnout will be better in November. If you look at the data of our city, for our city elections, turnout at our city elections is generally very poor. You know, I was looking at the mayor's statistics, uh, mayor election statistics not too long ago. And I was actually talking to a friend of mine from outside of the city, and I had to kinda drop my head because it was disgusting. The, the turnout was just horrible. We, we were down to almost thirty, maybe forty percent of our, um, of our, of our registered voters actually coming out and participating. So it wasn't, it wasn't very impressive, whatever the final, uh, statistics were. It wasn't very impressive, so. But if you look back at June, uh, voter turnout seemed to be a lot higher in June. Maybe it was because of all of the garbage and mess that was out there. But, um, but voter turnout tended to be pretty, pretty high in that, uh, in those primary elections. And so, and I think there, there was some statewide flavor to that. And I, and I understand, in my opinion, and this, at this point, that's all it is, is my opinion. I think, uh, we could minimize the expense, capitalize on, uh, the turnout element, and, uh, and continue to move forward with allowing people to vote if we do it in November. But, uh, but again, it's something that we're gonna, we're gonna be kicking around. I think where the judge and I differ is the date. I think, I think that's the only difference that we have. And I think he's motivated by some things that I might not be motivated by. You know, at the end of the day, the, the referendum, you know, and I, I so appreciate what he said earlier regarding being willing to reach out to the city council and the mayor before you even propose a referendum. I'm, I'm looking at Jenny Shaver. Congratulations to you, by the way. I bet you a dime to a dollar that she would have come to us and said, hey, what do you guys think? But we didn't get that courtesy. I have my opinions and reasons why I didn't get that courtesy or we didn't get that courtesy. But I don't want to get into that. I don't, I really don't want to get into that today. But I, I, you know, again, I have a reason as to why. I also have my reasons as to why I think it was a count, uh, I'm sorry, a state representative from District Thirty who represents not a single inch of the city of Gadsden who proposed it. You know, again, I have some opinions about why that, that was the case. But the fact of the matter is that it's out there, albeit very poorly written. It was very, if you read the referendum, it's a very poorly written referendum. Because it, it, when the referendum was first presented, it was presented, uh, highlighting and... Because when the referendum was first presented, it was presented highlighting an eighth at-large seat for the president, and then that was supposedly taken out. But as you get into the document, the reference to the eighth at-large position is referenced throughout the document. So, he took it out of the title page, but left it in all the other pages. So, again, it was a very hastily, poorly written, ill-conceived idea. But it's out there now, and the judge is absolutely right. We have to act. We have to, he's not, he's not wrong. And I'm, you know, I'm not that guy who digs in on a political position and decides to not tell you the truth. I mean, when he's right, he's right, and we do have to act. But we, you know, but again, that's a decision we're gonna have to make. We'll have to consider all of the advertising timelines and all of the spending considerations and all of those things. And again, I did not want to put Iva on the spot today. I don't think that's fair to her, because I know she's running the numbers and doing a lot of things, but there are also some decisions that are having to be made about equipment, about software, about, as you know, the state's transitioning in terms of how we manage our elections. So, we're having to, we're having to come out of the 1930s and come into the 21st century with how we do elections. And so, there's a, you know, there's a lot of things that have to be considered, to be quite honest. So, again, that's why I'm hesitant to put her on the spot like that, because, you know, if you know Iva, she's inclined to want to share and to want to tell you. But at this point, she's not at liberty to, because the numbers aren't final, and you're asking her to throw numbers out that may change significantly between now and the time the elections held. So, again, with all that said, I don't want to speak for these guys, but I think unanimously, nobody up here is gonna tell you that they're against people voting. And for the record, again, if I didn't make this clear earlier, I voted for an elected school board at that time, but I was motivated by something totally different. There were people in the community who essentially had two representatives that they could count on to take up their positions. And so, they felt like an elected school board was the only way that they could get their voice heard. You know, I think now, with the demographic shift in this council, they feel differently. And then, the folks that actually voted against it feel differently even now. And come on, guys, let's just be honest about what's motivating us. Let's be honest about what's pushing us and what's bringing this issue to the forefront. I don't think we're that interested in dates, and we're probably not that interested in what it's gonna cost the city. You know, we want people to vote, I think we all do, we want people to vote, and at the end of the day, they will get a chance to vote. There's nothing we can do about that. People are gonna be allowed to vote at some point, okay? And it's just a matter of when. It's just a matter of when, and we're gonna try to be as prudent with the city resources as we possibly can to make sure that that happens. Okay?
For the record, I did vote, you didn't act, but I did vote.
You made that clear. You made that, you made that very clear. All right. I do have one more announcement. Due to next Tuesday being the first day for candidates to qualify for the upcoming mayor and city council election, the Gaston City Council meeting will be held at 11:00 a.m. on Monday, July 2nd. So, that is a, that is a shift, again, so that the city clerk's office will have all day to devote time and consideration to any candidate that's interested in qualifying. Okay? All right? If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
No move? No move.[1754.65]